Okay, we have the time at 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you stand with me and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Heeston. Can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Raymert.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Tonight, we have our regular monthly meeting for the trustees, but we also have a public hearing tonight. We will start that public hearing after we open it up with visitor comments. We're going to open for visitor comments. Please keep your comments to five minutes. State your name and address, please, and then we will hold a public hearing.
So I have a comment. Mark Ross, 7444 South Divers Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Carl.
License tax.
Yes.
Sorry, you're cutting out a little bit. You're closing.
I'm here today to address the township trustees. Oh, okay. That won't make any difference. Can you hear me now? Can anyone hear me now?
Yeah, that's coming a little better.
Is that better? Can you? Okay, let's try it again. I am here today to address the German Township Trustees concerning the $5 permissive motor vehicle license tax proposal. Let me first state that I am in favor.
Dr. Cross, if you can withhold any comment on that, we'll do that during the public hearing if you don't mind. This will be for any comments outside of the public hearing, not related to the permissive motor vehicle tax, please.
All right. Put me on hold.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any opening comments not related to the permissive motor vehicle Okay, thank you. We're going to get into the public hearing piece of this related to the permissive motor vehicle tax that we just alluded to. Right now, I think, Mr. Heeston, would you like to read Resolution 2019? Actually, let me make a motion to remove the issue from the table from the last meeting.
Is there a second to the motion to remove Resolution 2021-19 from the table?
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table.
Did, Mr. Raymert, did you make the motion already?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Reed, you can be a second if that's fine.
I'm a second. I'm sorry, yes.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to remove Resolution 2021-19 from the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is passed.
Now, Mr. Heeston, would you like to read the resolution or would you rather I read it?
Whatever you prefer, Mr. Raymert.
Let me grab it here. Give me one second. Okay.
That's what was on the website.
All right. Resolution 2021-19, a resolution to recognize and show appreciate, oh, sorry, I don't have.
I think it's right here.
Okay. A resolution to levy an annual $5 license tax upon the operation of motor vehicles on public roads and highways in unincorporated territory of the township for any authorized purpose under the authority of the Ohio Revised Code, Section 4504, 181. Okay, I'm going to read a little bit about the process, although, related to the resolution. So, prior to the adoption of the resolution, under this section, the Board of Township Trustees shall conduct two public hearings on the resolution. Hearing not less than three, but not more than 10 days after the first hearing. The board shall provide notice of the date, time, and place of both hearings by publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the township as or as provided in Section 7.16 of the Revised Code, once a week on the same day of the week for two consecutive weeks. Second publication shall not be less than 10, but not more than 30 days prior to the first hearing. With that being said, these hearings were published on 4/22/21 and 4/29/21, there was notice published in the Germantown Press. Section C, under this ORC, says, "No resolution adopted under this section shall become effective sooner than 30 days following its adoption. A resolution under this section is subject to a referendum and the same mandate, except to the form of petition, as provided in Division H of Section 519.12 of the Revised Code, for proposed amendment to the Township zoning resolution. In addition, a petition under this section shall be governed by the rules of Sections 3501.38 of the Revised Code. No resolution levying a tax under this section for which referendum vote has been requested shall go into effect unless approved by a majority of those voting upon it. And finally, a township license tax levied under this section continues in effect until repealed." So with that, we're going to look to move into, sorry, I've got my notes out of order here, into a public hearing, and I'm going to explain the process to be followed in that public hearing. The road superintendent will provide a presentation on the topic, after which we'll provide an opportunity for testimony from the public, both proponents and opponents of the topic. All testimony will be under oath. Everyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing will give their name and address and be sworn in before testifying. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no further public testimony unless the trustees have a question that needs to be answered. Both will be as follows. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that all testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer "I do." And with that, I want to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public meeting is now open.
With that, Mr. Holbrook, would you give a brief presentation on the topic, please?
I would like to. Thank you. In 2019, the Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 62, which included the addition of an additional section in 4504, which was 4504.181, to the permissive motor vehicle license tax. This addition gave Ohio townships the authority to levy an additional $5 per vehicle registration tax within the unincorporated portion of the township. The Department of Public Safety estimates that this tax will generate an additional $21,000 to $25,000 yearly for Germantown Township. Passed, this money could only be used for the planning, construction, improvement, maintaining, and repairing of public roads, highways, streets, and for the maintaining and repair of bridges and viaducts. Currently, there are five sections enacted under the permissive motor vehicle license tax. The total tax currently is $25 per vehicle registration. Of that tax, Montgomery County receives $23.50, and Germantown Township receives $6.50 per vehicle in the unincorporated portion of Germantown Township. As the board is aware, Germantown Township Road and Service Department is grossly underfunded, and between November 2016 and November of 2018, the current and past Board of Trustees placed an additional two-mill road levy on the ballot four times. All four times, it failed. The Road Department desperately needs this additional funding to continue to maintain the roads within Germantown Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. At this time, we're going to open it up for public comment. There will be time for opponents and time for proponents. Those in favor of this permissive motor vehicle tax, we're going to ask you guys to go ahead and speak first. You do not need to be sworn in, but we do still need you to state your name and address, please. So, anyone who would like to speak, Mr. Cross, I think you're interested, so would you like to go first?
Yeah, thank you. Mark Ross, 7444, South Divers Road, Germantown, Ohio. Can you hear me all okay?
Yeah.
I am here today to address the Germantown Township Trustees concerning the $5 permissive motor vehicle license tax proposal. Let me first state that I am in favor of the proposed increase that will directly benefit the Germantown Township Road Department for the following reasons. First, some facts. The Road Department maintains 37.6 miles of roads in the township. To put this in perspective, if you drive from the township offices to IKEA via I-75, then drive nine more miles on I-75, you will have driven 37.6 miles. Our Road Department consists of only two employees. I have not been associated with two more dedicated individuals. There are no other Road Department employees, full or part-time. I have seen these men regularly mowing along our roads, replacing culverts, removing down limbs, and in the heat of the summer, sealing cracks in the roadways and spreading hot asphalt along our roadways. In the winter, their snow removal and road salting is always thorough and timely, keeping us safe. And this is in addition to maintaining their own equipment and the vehicles of our police department, while also maintaining our township buildings. However, all of these duties and maintaining our roads requires proper funding. Some residents are asking, "Didn't you just pass a road levy?" To clarify, the levy passed in November 2019 was an existing replacement levy with the city of Germantown. This was not a new levy, just to fund the Germantown Township Road Department. In fact, a new two-mill levy that would have funded just Germantown Township Road has voted down, been voted down four times. Maintaining our roads is expensive. We would all love newly paved roads, but at this time, paving roads is cost prohibitive. Paving is close to $100,000 per mile. Chip seal is even expensive, at $21,000 per mile. The township is planning on chip sealing 4.6 miles of roads in 2021 at a cost of $81,928. So how does the township raise funds for the Road Department to maintain our roads? After the 5.5 bond levy and the 0.5% increase in the income tax for the schools, the failure of a dedicated road levy for Germantown Township is almost guaranteed. Raising the license tax by $5 per year seems to be the most equitable way to raise funds for the Road Department. If you live in Germantown Township and own a vehicle and drive on township roads, you pay an additional $5 per year. That $5 goes right back to Germantown Township and must, by law, go for road maintenance. That $5 is a direct investment for all of us. It is not going to some unnamed government project. As an aside, since I own a hybrid vehicle, I pay an extra $100 per year for registration, so I consider $5 a bargain. The $5 increase is estimated by the BMV to raise about $21,000 per year. Coincidentally, that is about the cost to chip seal one mile of township roads. We all know the damage poor roads can do to our vehicles. Properly maintaining our roads, even with limited funding, is always the goal of the Road Department. In conclusion, if the public supports this action by the trustees, you are supporting Jeremy Holbrook and Scott Hamilton, our Road Department staff, and are directly benefiting yourself, our township roads, and taking pride in our township. I hope the trustees will support this action and in the future, will try to funnel available general fund money to our underfunded Road Department. Thank you.
You, Mr. Cross? Does there anyone else with comments?
Mr. Raymert, I would like to speak, if you don't mind, please.
Sure. You'll state your name and address, please.
I will. Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica Road. I can't top Mr. Cross's very eloquent and prepared remarks. Other than to say, I am in complete agreement with him. Having been deeply involved with the Road Department and their finances for several years, I know that this money will be put to good use, and I would encourage the board to pass a, what is really a very, very nominal fee, that would go to great benefit for the Road Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? If there's no others, we will look to close the public meeting. Any others that would like to speak, whom, for or against this issue? Okay. I think with that, we'll look to close. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second.
All in favor of the motion to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Okay, I will make a motion to table Resolution 2021-19.
I will second the motion to table Resolution 2020-19.
Any discussion of the motion?
Yes, I will just note that we do have a second public hearing scheduled for May 18th, which is next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. This meeting has been publicly announced in the press as well, and so we will have a second public hearing on this topic at that time.
All in favor of the motion to table 2021-19?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. The motion, the resolution is once again tabled.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move back to our regular scheduled programming, and Mr. Heeston, your fiscal officer report, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone, again. I don't have a whole lot tonight, so it should not take a great deal of time. First of all, we have the minutes for two meetings, the April 12th regular meeting and the April 19th special meeting, and that was the special meeting where we opened the bids, sealed bids for the chip seal program this year. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have, I've provided to you the April financial reports. You have the fund status report as of April 30, the year-to-date cash summary by fund through April 30, the April receipt listing, and the April payment listing, and I have several items that I want to make note of. First of all, receipt number 42 includes $25,502 for the sale of the 2004 International Dump Truck. Receipt number 48 includes $1,684.03 for a capital distribution from the Ohio Township Association, O-TARMA, and I'm drawing a blank on the full name for O-TARMA. Sorry about that. Voucher number 267 is the semi-annual $7,968.23 payment to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the state infrastructure bank loan that we obtained several years ago for the EB Road repairs. We have two remaining payments on this loan totaling $15,389.35. And finally, warrant number 50467 is the semi-annual $10,307.25 loan payment to First National Bank for the Water and Sewer District Loan. And we now have seven payments remaining on that loan totaling $72,150.75. Are there any additional, any questions on the financial reports? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the April financial reports? Authorize the payment of the April bills, which are warrants 50457 through 50471, and vouchers 234 through 333, and those represent payroll, direct deposit, payroll tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I know this is a issue of great importance to the trustees and the entire township, so once again, I want to let everyone know the status of the Ohio Township Association's efforts to try to influence and convince the US Department, Treasury Department, concerning putting Ohio townships into the distribution of funds from the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 that was signed into law back on March the 11th. As you know, townships were excluded from the $350 billion in that law that were earmarked for state and local governments. The initial version that was passed by the House of Representatives included townships, but changes made by the Senate and finally enacted into the law removed townships from the list. The OTA, both Ohio senators and many of Ohio's representatives, have asked Treasury Secretary Yellen to revise the definition of eligible local governments to include Ohio's townships. Unfortunately, there has not been a response to the township and the representatives and senators' requests by the Treasury Department, and my guess, if I can pull out my crystal ball, is we will never see any money from this. Following last month's meeting, I forwarded your resolution requesting that the county auditor certify the funds to be received by a .5-mill, five-year replacement parks and recreation levy. We have received the auditor certification. The levy would generate $103,391 annually at 95%. So the next step now is for you to pass a resolution to place the levy on the November ballot for the entire township, both the unincorporated and the incorporated areas, and I have a draft resolution, if you're prepared to do that, that I would like to reapply or do its introduction. Would you like me to go forward, Mr. Raymert?
Yes, please, please read the resolution.
Okay, we're going to make this Resolution 2021-22. It's a resolution determining to proceed to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation. The Board of Trustees, Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, met in a regular session, open to the public, on May 10th, 2021, at the Germantown Township Hall, located at 12102 State Route 725 West, Germantown, Ohio 45327, and also online using WebEx. The following members were present, Mr. Tyler Raymert, Mrs. Avra Reed, Mr. Jacob Stubbs, and we will add in the name of the person who moves the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, have determined that it is necessary to levy a tax outside of the 10-mill limitation for Germantown Township, and whereas, the Board of Trustees of Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, proposes that said tax be a replacement levy for parks and recreation purposes, as specified in Section 5005.19, subsection H of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas, the levy shall be at a rate of 1 half, .5 mill, for each $1 evaluation, which amounts to 5 cents for each $100 evaluation, for a period of five years commencing in 2021, the first due in calendar year 2022. And whereas, the county auditor has certified the total current valuation of the unincorporated and incorporated area of Germantown Township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the proposed levy annually, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, two-thirds of all the members elected or appointed thereto concurring. Section 1, that the Board of Trustees of Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby determines to proceed with the replacement levy, and the question of said tax levy shall be submitted to the electors of the unincorporated and incorporated portions of Germantown Township at the general election to be held on November 2nd, 2021. If said tax is approved by a majority of said electors, such tax levy shall first be placed upon the 2021 tax list and duplicate for first collection in calendar year 2022. Section 2, that the fiscal officer of the Board of Trustees of Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Board of Elections, Montgomery County, Ohio, not less than 90 days before the end, sorry, 90 days before the end of said election, upon which it will be voted, and to notify the Board of Elections to cause notice of election on the question of levying said tax to be given as required by law. And we will then insert the name of the person who seconded this motion, this resolution. Would somebody like to introduce Resolution 2021-22?
Yes, I would like to introduce Resolution 2021-22.
I will second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yeah.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-22 is adopted. I believe this may also be brought up in Chief Anzig's report, but I'll go ahead and talk about it at this point, and that is, each May, the trustees pass a resolution declaring May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And with your permission, Mr. Raymert, I'd like to read this one also. This will be Resolution 2021-23, a resolution to recognize and show appreciation to all present and former Germantown Township police officers and employees for their contributions and dedication to the betterment of the Germantown Township community, will be introduced by, I will have a name, seconded by, have a name, during the regular board meeting on May 10th, 2021. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas, the members of Germantown Township Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the unincorporated portion of Germantown Township, and whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And now, therefore, the Germantown Township Board of Trustees, Montgomery County, hereby resolves, Section 1, that the Germantown Township Board of Trustees will commemorate the sacrifice of America's peace officers by recognizing May 15th and Germantown Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, excuse me, in accordance with Resolution 96- as Peace Officers Memorial Day, excuse me, in accordance with Resolution ninety-six dash twenty-four, and fly the township flag at half-staff in their honor on that day. And Section two, that the German Township Board of Trustees thank and recognize the hard work and commitment of the employees of the German Township Police Department in their continued efforts to serve this community with integrity, dedication, and honor. Could I have someone introduce Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three?
Introduce Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three?
Our police officers go above and beyond every day, do a fantastic job, smallest accredited police department in the country. We're lucky to have the police department we have and Chief Anzik and all of our officers, so we're lucky to have what we have.
Yeah, I'll say the same thing. I mean, obviously, this resolution says it, but I want to say it personally. I appreciate the work and what they do every day. I know especially in the last couple of weeks, they've had some specific things that they're facing and challenged with, and they're just riding to the occasion, and I appreciate everything that they do for us.
Hearing no further discussion, I will call the question. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three is adopted. All right, just two quick things. First of all, a reminder about that special trustee meeting, which, Mr. Raymert, you mentioned earlier. It's going to be next Tuesday at seven PM, which is May eighteenth, and that will be the second public hearing on the proposed five-dollar additional tax on license fee registrations. And a vote on Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, which concerns the five-dollar tax, will need to be voted on that evening. If approved, as you said earlier, Mr. Raymert, there will be a thirty-day waiting period before the resolution goes into effect, and the deadline to submit an adopted and effective resolution to the Board of Motor Vehicles is July first. And finally, as a member of the Germantown Lions and on behalf of the club, I wish to invite everyone to the Memorial Day program at Veterans Park, which will be followed by the pilgrimage to the cemetery. This in-person event was not held last year due to COVID-19, and in its place, the Lions last year filmed a virtual Memorial Day ceremony, but we are looking forward to being in person again this year. And with that, Mr. Raymert, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. We'll move over to Chief Anzik. Mr. Anzik, your report.
Thank you. First shred day was Saturday, May first. It was probably our lowest turnout since our debut of this event. We shredded roughly three hundred pounds of paper and took in about five pounds of unwanted medication. The new copier is now up and running at the PD, Police Cruisers. The one that we picked up last month has been striped. However, there's approximately an eight-week wait for installation of hardware, light sirens, et cetera. So we haven't got it up and running yet. I want to thank the trustees for recognizing Peace Officer Memorial Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day. This tradition of recognizing the service and sacrifice of law enforcement began in nineteen sixty-two when President John F. Kennedy issued the first proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. So we thank you. And last, I have, the police department needs to declare as surplus those items on our inventory that we found we no longer have. And if you will go to the packet I provided you, page four, I will just read through them rather quickly. Okay. Item number one-one-two-six, a camera, super circuit in-car camera. Next is eleven fifty-six, a Konica copier. We just traded that in for the new one. Items twelve hundred through twelve oh four is a Vertex portable radio. And if you continue on page five, twelve oh five through twelve oh seven is also Vertex portable radios. On page six is a flashlight, or thirteen thirty-five through thirteen thirty-eight flashlight twenty XP. Page seven is a fourteen twenty-nine through fourteen thirty-two Motorola radios. They're portable radios. That concludes my list.
We will need a resolution to declare these items as excess, some of which have, I guess all of which have been already disposed of, Chief?
Uh, yeah.
So.
Sorry, go ahead. All right, that's all I have to say. We no longer have any of those items I listed.
So we'll just declare them as excess and recognize that they have been disposed. And we will make that as Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
I'll introduce Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four to declare those items mentioned by Chief Anzik as surplus.
I will second that.
Any discussion of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four? Hearing none, I will call the question. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four is adopted.
And one last thing, I saw the email regarding liquor permit renewals. Every year, if we are having problems or not having problems, we, police department comes forward. The two liquor establishments that we have are Jamaica Run Golf Course, which I don't know of any problems we've had out of that establishment. And the second is Cracker Jack's. Jack has worked with us. We just, we're out there a couple of weeks ago. He was having some problems. He contacted us, and we took care of his problem for him. So I have no problems with either liquor permit locations at this time, and that is my report.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Holbrook?
Just to have a couple of items on my report this evening. Back in April of twenty twenty, the board declared the Lanair, I, or, excuse me, Lanair HI-one-forty used oil-burning furnace excess, to be declared excess, which we did. Finally, did get that on GovDeals, and it sold last week. The unit sold for two thousand twenty-five dollars. Just some quick backstory on that. We actually got that unit on a grant, so it didn't cost the township any money at all. So with the sale of that, we actually came ahead, so hopefully, the gentleman that was the winning bidder will be in tomorrow to pick it up. The only other items I had, just kind of let you know what we've been up to. We will begin mowing the township ditches tomorrow. Continue mowing the cemeteries as we can get in there when it's not so wet. And we completed spraying the township maintained guard rail and all the township maintained roadways today. So with that, that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holbrook, and Mrs. Sewell.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I don't have any old news tonight, some new news. I've been writing several permits over the last month, a few pools, home addition debt, old barn, and a new house. The next zoning appeals board meetings will be a hearing, which will be on May twenty-fifth. And last month, you guys asked me to look at some office hours starting soon. So if you guys agree, I have looked at my schedule, and it looks like Monday, eight to ten, and Friday, noon to two. Seem to be pretty good hours, and also by appointment. So if you guys would like to approve that tonight, I can get that posted starting June first.
Eight to ten on Monday AM and Friday, ten to noon, right?
Uh, twelve to two.
Twelve to two, okay. And, and just for everyone's clarification, previously, this was, well, how many hours did we have? Is office hours prior to COVID?
Prior to COVID, it was Tuesdays from two to four.
Okay, so two hours a week is what we had, so I'd ask Haley to look at it based on discussions we had at prior meetings, and I feel like this is reasonable, but definitely open discussion based on anyone's past experience or thoughts. I think on Monday, Friday, especially with eight AM, you know, give an opportunity for people that work a nine-to-five job, eventually drop by, so. Any thoughts?
As long as we're allowing appointment only, previously, we had Tuesday, Thursday, I think it was in the morning one day, and then like four to six in the afternoon on the other day. So as long as people are able to make it.
Yeah, I never worked. I don't remember specifically what happened, but I know I only ever worked Tuesdays.
Okay.
But I did want to do like an earlier morning and then an afternoon, and then, of course, by appointment, any day of the week. I'm, I'm always here.
As long as we're taking appointment only, because I know for sure, I wouldn't, if I ever had to come into the zoning office, I could never make those two times specifically.
Yeah, I mean, even if it needed to be by an appointment earlier than the eight AM.
Okay.
Obviously, that, I could do that. And then one thing that I did not list on my report tonight, I do have a couple items that are no longer in the zoning office that I need to declare also.
So let's, are we gonna approve the hours first?
So I'll make a motion. I assume we just need a motion on that to approve the, the office hours that will be posted for the zoning office as Monday, eight to ten AM, and Friday, twelve to two PM, and additionally by appointment.
Yes, I think a motion is appropriate, Mr. Raymert, so that would be fine. Is there a second to the motion?
I will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is passed. The excess items, would you please read those to us? Mrs. Sewell?
Yes, the first excess item, it looks like it's item number one zero four seven. It is a Microsoft Office Sweet CD ROM, which is no longer in the office. Item number one zero four eight, which is a Netgear Network Hub, also no longer. Item number one-one-eight-eight, which is an HP Photos, Photosmart printer, which does not work.
So. Mr. Heaton? I, I was, and I, maybe Mr. Holbrook can touch base on this. When I'm looking at the asset list for the road department, there are three things that are also darkened. I'm assuming those.
That's where he marked the.
So those, okay. That's just where.
Beginning and ending of the report.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to make those excess as well.
So we'll use Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five to declare these three items as excess that either have been or will be disposed.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five to declare three items in the zoning department as excess.
Is there a second? Thank you very much. Any discussion of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five? Hearing none, I will call the question. Mr., sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, this puts to the end the rest of this exercise for this year, correct?
I'm, I think so. I, I will double-check all the records we have, but I think this may be the last one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five is adopted.
Okay, as far as my report, a couple of months back, we were speaking with Mr. Holbrook. I'm not even sure he's on the line at this moment, about, yeah, he is, about the window seal and getting a second bid. You had been kind enough to get a first quote on replacing the window seal in the back office here at the township building on the trustee side. And you'd asked if we could look into getting the second one, as you had gotten, obviously, very busy as summer started with the road department, understandably so. I tried to call a couple of window installers and ask if they would be willing to quote. They said that they do not perform that service, that they only sell new windows. I asked for them to refer me to someone else. I did not find anything on Google, although I'm sure there's plenty out there. At this point, knowing that what you had recommended, I know we had Mr. Cleveland speak about this and saying that the person that you had recommended on the first quote was very reputable. I'm not finding any ability simply to get a second quote on this, so my suggestion for the trustees is to go ahead and accept the first quote by the reputable person that we were aware of providing the first quote to Jeremy. Jeremy, I don't know if you or Mr. Easton have previous record of that and want to discuss further. Anybody got any questions or comments?
Give me a second. I'll see if I can find the quote, but it was from Commercial Roofing Services, Mr. Dennis Seitz. He was also the gentleman that did the roof repair. And like I said, he's, he's done good work for us in the past, and just happened to come up in conversation while he was here working on the roof that he had done some repairs on a multi-story building in downtown Dayton, and that's how this all kind of came about, but let me see if I can find this real quick.
Looking back at my notes, I believe it was the March eighth meeting, and it looks like it was for, and this is, I'm sure, is a rough estimate, right around seventeen hundred dollars. I'm sure that's not.
That sounds correct to me.
Seventeen hundred is what we have in the minutes of the March eighth meeting.
I, that sounds real familiar.
And how, and how many windows was this, as I recall?
Uh, that would be how many is on the side? Four?
Okay.
On the east side?
I think it's three in the meeting room.
Okay, so it'd be, if it's three on the, if it's three on the side and two in the back, it would be five. And if there's four on the side, I, I can't think off the top of my head, trying to find that.
Tony, what's in the, what's in the meeting room, whatever is out there?
So three, plus the two in the, in the, one in your office and one in the trustee room.
Okay, I, I mean, at this point, I know Mr. Cleveland was saying is very specialized, Jeremy, you know, you were satisfied with, with the work he did and with quote, like I said, I, I've not found anybody else that can match it, so I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but I'm just saying that at this point, I feel like it makes sense to get back in touch with him and try to get on the schedule, knowing that we're risking further damage in the one that leaks, you know, as today, so.
Right. Why don't we go ahead and do a motion on that, Mr. Raymert? I don't think it needs to be a resolution, because this will fall under the budgeted amounts that we set aside this, this year in the appropriations.
Okay, I'm gonna introduce a motion to move forward with the seventeen hundred dollar quote that Jeremy procured for the window ceiling.
I will second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is passed.
Okay, second topic is, uh, related to the JED progress. We've met again since our last, uh, regular scheduled trustee meeting on the JED. Uh, continues to make progress. I know they have reached out to the school board, uh, person on that JED committee, uh, to inform them of the progress being made to date and let them know of the next steps in the process related to the JED, so the school could become aware of where we are and, and what's needed from them as we progress forward. Uh, there's still another meeting scheduled for the JED, which is June sixteen, seventeen, yes.
It's May.
Oh, the next one's June.
Your first, the next one is June tenth. Thank you.
Is it tenth?
No, it is June seventeenth is what I have in my calendar.
We said tenth initially.
At six PM.
Yeah, so June seventeenth, I'm sorry for the confusion, at six PM will be the next JED meeting. Uh, obviously the last few and several have been, uh, open to the public, so we'll try to keep it that way. So if you have any interest in the JED, you can comment in there if you have any questions. As far as the parks board, uh, we, we have met as we passed the resolution tonight to put the levy on the, uh, the ballot this November. We're continuing to look for, uh, how we will address the need for the levy and explain that to the community. Uh, I've been surprised by the exhaustive list of things that need to be done that have not been done to date. Uh, with the levy that we have and knowing that if we don't pass it, that those things will become, uh, abandoned services. So I think it's important for us to, you know, demonstrate to the community where that money will go and what it'll be used for, and there is an exhaustive list being created to explain what services exist today and what can be done with that money in the future, so. Give everyone an update there. Uh, another thing is that we do intend to have the July fourth parade. I think a lot of people are looking forward to that. Communication will be to follow for the July fourth parade. And the last issue I have tonight is the zoning commission. At the last meeting, uh, trustee regular meeting, I mentioned that we potentially could have a zoning, uh, board position come open. Uh, unfortunately, that did come true. Uh, Mr. Paul Dolez had sent me his resignation letter after our last scheduled trustee meeting. Uh, I want to first say thanks to Mr. Dolez for his service. He had served on that board for several years. He was the zoning commission trustee, or president, I'm sorry, at the, at the time of his resignation and had led that commission, uh, in my opinion, very well and diligently, um, with a high professionalism. So thanks for his service. Uh, thankfully, we do have two alternates. And we have asked one alternate if they'd be interested in moving to the, the regular board. And that was Mr. Kurt Jacoby, who has been, uh, an alternate in my understanding for the last ten plus years on the zoning commission. He's highly engaged and has a done a fantastic job of showing up and staying engaged on the zoning commission. And so with that, I'll make a motion to move Mr. Jacoby from an alternate to the board, active board.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion?
Just that Paul Dole, I, I interviewed Paul Dolez when he first came on the board and I was very impressed and I'm, uh, we're lucky to have his, uh, service here with his background. And I also know Kurt Jacoby and I know he will do a fantastic job, um, on the zoning board as well, so, um, happy to have Mr. Jacoby.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion to appoint Mr. Jacoby to the zoning commission?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion, uh, passes.
And on that same topic, knowing that, uh, uh, Mr. Jacoby had shown interest and had served on the board for several years, uh, as an alternate and likely to be, uh, accepted by this board due to his great service. Uh, we did proactively go ahead and post for the zoning alternate position that would open up, um, as he moved on to the board. Uh, that posting was left open until May first. Um, we did have luckily several candidates from prior posting, now back in, I want to say September of last year. And, uh, one of those candidates reaffirmed their interest as well as I know others still were interested in the position. And, uh, I would like to make a motion tonight to move Eric Walters onto the zoning alternate position. Um, it's actually Brent Walters, I think is what he goes by as Brent. Um, Mr. Walters has a strong resume. I spoke with him for a period of time. I, I've never met him in person. Um, but, uh, he has shown a lot of interest in township positions over the last year. Uh, as he showed up to a, a few meetings and, uh, submitted his resume for a couple of positions recently, so. With that, I would make a motion to move Mr. Walters onto the zoning alternate.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion to appoint Mr. Walters as the alternate to the zoning commission? If not, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Walters is appointed.
Thank you. And Mrs. Reed, on to you.
Oh, I do not have very much this evening. On May third, the fire department, the safety building EMS building, um, that was newly renovated, constructed in, um, Germantown for both the, you know, the joint Germantown, Germantownship Fire Department and EMS, um, they had a grand opening or ribbon cutting and they allowed, um, people to come and tour it. There were several people in attendance and a nice reception, so I did attend that and it was very, very nice. We had, um, Raj Antani and Tom Young, the state rep and the, um, state senator come, so that was a nice thing. And it was nice to see the wonderful building and everything that has been added on there. The, um, EMS and the fire department was there and they were very thankful with all of their new equipment and facilities, so that is all that I have.
Mrs. Reed and Mr. Stubbs?
Yeah, just a question on the people to attend, uh, um, I, I was told that was not open to the public. Is that accurate?
Uh, I don't, I don't know if it was open to the public necessarily. I know that we got an email invitation
Right, right.
To us directly. I don't know about public. I know that there was I know that the fire, the EMS, the employees were there, um, city council, there were some speakers from Furmanville, the fire chief from Furman looking, but it was being opened to public. I don't believe it was open to my residents and such because of COVID restrictions, as last I heard, so.
Okay, just curious, the public paying for it.
May I address that subject, Mr. Stubbs? I, I did communicate with Mrs. Gilland about that, uh, that issue. And she says that the city plans to have a public tour of the new facility once we're past the COVID. But because of social distancing, they wanted to limit the crowd as much as possible at the, uh, dedication ribbon cutting.
Okay, it's just pretty disappointing for a community building. I saw the email and I, I had a track meet that night and I couldn't attend. But, um, to not allow the public to attend the ribbon cutting when they're paying for it, I thought was in poor taste. But I'll move on to my report. Uh, cemetery, uh, we have a mower with an issue all of a sudden that popped up. It it appears that it's going to be the injection pump on the Ferris with the cat diesel and that's not going to be a terribly cheap fix, we're afraid. Um, so we're looking at, um, a way to get the pump off and have it rebuilt. We also approved tonight the purchase of a new mower, uh, Ferris, um, to help out with the mowing. Um, I know Jeremy had offered, uh, the township's mower if, if the timing worked out to help, help them get through, because Memorial Day is the big day for the cemetery. And, uh, losing the big, it's the big one that mows out by the road and does a lot of the area is, um, is the one that went down, so. Um, appreciate Jeremy's offer for that, but they are going to be able to get through it, appears. Um, I attended the shred day and as Chief said earlier, it was not well attended by people, but I'm assuming it had to do uh, with COVID and what, whatnot. But hopefully next year we can build it back up. Um, I came to volunteer and our police officers do a fantastic job, so there, there wasn't a whole lot for me to do, but stand around and look good, which is not my strong suit, but, uh, it worked out pretty well. They, they had it set up, a drive-through, they had cones up, we drove through. It was, um, touchless. They, people would pop the trunk, our officers would grab their papers, throw it in the bin, put their bin back if they wanted it and they drove on out, so. It, the traffic flow was very nice with that and people were dropping off pills at the front of the building if they had the prescriptions. So thank you to Chief Anzik and the police department for organizing that. As it's a yearly, um, event that, uh, I know a lot of people try to attend to get their documents shredded. Pool board, we're still in need of one new member. We got to welcome a new member at our last meeting. But we're still one short, so if anyone in the community is interested in serving on the pool board, last, at our last meeting, we were still one member short, uh, contact me here at the township or Germantown, the city building, and let them know your interest. Next. Um, at what point do we think we're going to be able to get back to in-person meetings? Because I think we're getting to the point where it needs to happen again.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we have to go behind the Montgomery County, if it's still on level three. Is that our discretion on that? Because I, I know that we're still on level three, although I think it's moving towards level two, so I don't know if we're going to tie it to that or if we add.
Right, I'm, I'm not sure on that, but I just think we're to the point where.
And that may be something where I want to go back and look at when we first started doing this, what, because there were some motions or resolutions made about tying it to that red level. And I might have it in my notes here, because I'm not exactly sure of the month. So that would be something too, that if we're going to adjust, we probably need to make a motion or something to align with whatever the original, you know, to change or update that, um, motion that was passed. I'm assuming maybe March or April of last year would be about that timeframe.
So I'm thinking July.
Well, go ahead.
About the time that the governor instituted the levels, which didn't happen immediately when COVID started, but you then made a motion that as long as we were in level three, we would do the virtuals, but of course that can be changed at any time, simply by a motion as was pointed out.
Well, I'd like to give us a month to think about it and target potentially July as our first in-person meeting. Um, see where we go from this month to next month, but I, I would like to ask you guys to keep it in consideration and decide at our next meeting if we can go forward starting in July with in-person meetings, if possible, so.
Can I ask a question about that? Would we also offer the WebEx as well?
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I set it up, but in-person, allow people to come if they choo- choose to and, um, have the online option as well.
Okay.
So I can get this set up, how the room is going to be permanently set up for this, so. I, I did have one last thing. It's not necessarily for, um, actually it's not even really for us, so I, I'll, I'll get that with Shawna later, so.
I, I guess, just a little further discussion on that one. Um, I mean, we can make a decision definitely at the June meeting. I guess the question is if we're still on level three, the question is, do we want to go ahead and just move back to it even though it's not on level three, make that decision at June, the June meeting?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I think we'll have thirty days. I mean, um, I don't know how you'll feel coming out of, uh, you know, labor and stuff on, on that one, but definitely let's have the discussion at June meeting with an open mind. I, I think we can track the, the cases. They're tracking them, obviously, and they continue to fall right now, so.
Right.
Absolutely, that, I think it makes a lot of sense to at least consider it early, so.
Right, because I know cemetery are meeting in person, pool board are meeting in person.
Yeah, we, we did move to Parks and War meeting in person this month, but we were meeting outside, so.
Right.
That's a nice element of it, but, um, yeah, and I don't know how much participation, but we can always gauge it and see how many people come in, in person and, uh, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Holbrook. Jeremy, I, I may need to, I'll pick your brain on, on thoughts with the, the setup of the camera, that kind of thing, so we can get set up and ready to roll when we do actually go back to in-person as well.
Okay. And with, yeah. With the one question I have for Shawna, I will, uh, that concludes my report.
Okay, with that, uh, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at eight oh four. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.